Okay, good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting in the Somersville City Council tonight. Before we open tonight's meeting, the first order of business would be to officially open our public hearing for the City of Somersville Home Rule Written Plan and Application. So our public hearing is officially open. The application has been on review or available for review here at City Hall, and it's also on the webpage. Anybody that hasn't had the opportunity to go out and review it, I encourage you to do so. But at this time, Amy, is there anybody signed up back there to speak to or during the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, does anybody want to speak before we close the public hearing? Okay, having nobody here to speak, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move right into tonight's agenda. The first item on the agenda would be consideration of the council minutes for the meeting we held on July 11th of 2022.
Move to approve and waive the reading. Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, council. The motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they appeared in your packet? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Back to Amy again. I hope everybody signed up for public comment. Okay, moving right along. Tonight will be the second and final reading and adoption of the ordinance approving the City of Somersville Home Rule Written Plan and Application. Council, at the last meeting, I read the ordinance from top to bottom. So what I would do is entertain a motion to approve, or motion for the second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first and a second. Council, any questions, discussion, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Just real quick, the rundown on the docket for the packet now will be that we'll get the entire packet. We have to assemble all exhibits, attorney opinions, and affidavits, which we'll get to work on tomorrow. And delivery to the Home Rule Board, it has to be there by Friday, September 9th, which is 30 days prior to the meeting. And I will actually make the presentation to the Home Rule Board. We are scheduled for Wednesday, October 12th of 2022. So close to the finish line, getting the rest of the documents put together and shipped out down to the Home Rule Board. Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda will, the next item on the agenda is the acceptance of Rodney Snodgrass's resignation as Fire Chief of the City of Somersville Fire Department. It's unfortunate Rodney couldn't be here with us this evening. What I would ask everybody to do, I did have contact with Rodney today, and Rodney right now is taking care of some health issues. And so what I would ask is that we all keep Rodney and his family in our prayers and know that, I had a conversation with him today, Rodney gave many, many, many years of service to the Somersville Fire Department and its chiefship. So I told Rodney, when we can get things worked out, we're going to definitely have him back here. We'd invite all you to please come back because we're going to appropriately recognize him for his many years of service to this city. So at this time, what we could do is just pray for his health situation. And what I would do is, I need to have a motion to accept Rodney Snodgrass's, or accept his resignation effective today.
Move to approve.
We have a first and a second. Gene was the second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. So the next item on the agenda would be to approve and appoint City of Somersville Fire Chief Evan Aldrich. So at this time, I would invite Evan to come to the podium. And what I'd like to do, just real briefly, is explain to City Council that when Rodney let it be known that he was going to resign, the Somersville Fire Department held a meeting on July 17th, Sunday, July 17th. At that meeting that took place, I guess it was kind of a double meeting. The officers met, put the slate of officers together that were going to be nominated to be on the ballot for election. And then at 7 o'clock, the full Fire Department turns out to vote for the Fire Chief. Is that correct?
Yes, that was correct.
Okay. And I'm excited to say that unanimously, the Fire Department voted for Rodney's replacement to be Evan Aldrich. So council, I will tell you that in front of you tonight, you all should have, for lack of words, a resume of Evan. I asked him to put it together and let us know, you know, a little bit about him, his experience. And of course, also, I said, just include a little piece about your background and history, and you did a fantastic job putting this together. I will also let you know, council, that I've already had a one-on-one with Evan. And we've talked a lot about, you know, what some of his vision is and just, you know, what's going to happen here in the near future. You know, anytime you pass the torch from one hand to another, you know, we're ready for a new chapter. And so Evan, I'll be excited to see what your leadership brings to the Somersville Fire Department. So with that said, what I'd like to do is I'd first like to get a motion on the table for your appointment. I'll look for a first.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a first and a second. And I'll turn it over to you. Tell us a little bit about you, Evan.
Thank you. Like the mayor just said, my name is Evan Aldrich, and I come before you this evening in hopes that you confirm me as this great city's next Fire Chief. I'd like to provide you a brief background of myself, and you all will have what I'm going by there in front of you. I was born in Parkersburg, West Virginia, and I grew up in Gilmore County, West Virginia, which is a couple counties over from here. I graduated from Gilmore County High School, class of 2005, and I attended Glenville State University, where I graduated in 2009 with a bachelor's degree in behavioral science with a concentration in criminal justice. While in college, I acquired my firefighter one certification. I was a member of the Gilmore County Volunteer Fire Department. That is where I got my start. After graduating, I moved to Somersville since my family had moved here years earlier when I first started college. In June 2009, I joined Somersville Fire Department. And I remember when I first pulled into the parking lot of the department, I thought, wow, this place must be a paid department, just because of how nice the station was and how clean that all of our, all the trucks and the equipment was. I asked for an application and was welcomed soon after with open arms. I currently work with Federal Bureau of Prisons Special Investigations Unit as an investigator, and I'm stationed in Glenville, West Virginia at SCI Gilmore. I married the love of my life, Kelly, in 2012, and she has been my rock ever step of the way. And I became a proud daddy in November 2020 to Katie, who has her daddy wrapped around her little finger. I have served as a lieutenant for the department, and I now currently serve as Assistant Chief. My responsibilities have included, as an officer of the department, running of social media and public relations for the department, training, and incident reporting. During my time of service, I have acquired numerous certifications in firefighting, auto extrication, rope rescue, fire engine operations, scuba diving, and much more. I am honored the members of our great department have the confidence in me to lead our department going forward. I think back to when I first walked up the parking lot nervous about joining and how little did I know 13 years later, they would ask me to be their next chief. I know I would not be here without them, and I would not be the firefighter I am today without the members standing behind me. I know I have big shoes to fill as chief, as you mentioned before with Chief Snodgrass. I wouldn't be the man I am today without him. He showed me a lot, guided me a lot whenever I was young. I look forward to continuing the tradition of our great department as for providing the best service to our citizens. Thank you. May God bless.
Well said, Evan. Well said. Council, any questions? Okay, with that said, all those in favor of the appointment of Somersville's new Fire Chief, Evan Aldrich. All those four signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Congratulations. Thank you. So what I would like to do is get all of you to pack in here real quick, and I'm going to present Evan with a Fire Chief badge. And let's try to get a photo op in here. And council, if you'd stand up in behind him. Evan, I guess me and you will be in the front of your wife and hand. Counsel, you might have to, a lot of these firefighters are a lot taller than them kids they usually stand in front of us. Move around so that we can see you all. Make sure that, okay, let's get out.
You can't see council and Halsd.
You can't see.
That's what she said. Sorry to get everybody. One, two, three. All right.
Okay. Now let's get one with your wife and daughter in here. Oh, everybody hold up, we're going to get one more here with you. Right here, you stand ready.
It's only going to get worse.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay. Congratulations. Good work. Hey, thank all of you too. Again, every opportunity we have, we thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm older.
Everybody see my glasses?
Yeah.
This is going to be an interesting meeting, and I don't have my goggles.
Okay. All right, moving right along. The next item on the agenda, council, would be the general, the general fund budget 2022 budget revision number one. So council, this is, this is the first carry forward. And so I'd like to run down just real quick. We're actually, we started with an anticipation of $770,000 in unassigned carry forward balance. In this carry forward, we're adding another $1,387,023. Bring our total carry forward to $2,157,023. What I would like to do is go down through there, and the police confiscated property spending, we're actually decreasing that. We had as an original line item in the budget, $70,000. There's actually $2,477 less funds in that account, so the carry forward in that account will actually be 67,523. Then we're adding, next would be Street Department, $90,000 and $100,000 to bring their contractuals to $415,000. The $90,000 is carry forward for the sidewalk grant. That's our, our match that we have to provide for that grant, the 20%. And add another $100,000 to paving, which will give us a total of $150,000 in paving. The next item is the Street Department capital outlay. We ordered three trucks this past year, this $90,000 set in this last year's budget. We still have not received those three trucks, so we're carrying that money forward. We have been told that there's all probability we might get them real soon. But anyway, we have to put that $90,000 back in the budget for the Street Department capital outlay for the trucks that we've ordered and not received. So that brings that line item to $197,000. Parks and Rec, we're adding $4,000 to the $40,000 already in their contractual. And that's $4,000 is the balance to, to complete a Nicholas Intervention Coalition mural project. And basically what this is, is in our city mural committee, this is grant monies that we receive that are earmarked for murals. So we're just carrying that $4,000, $4,000 forward as it has not been spent. Then the next item is Parks and recreational capital outlay. You can see we had in that line item $35,000. We're adding $1 million to that. And of course, that will hopefully be for, not hopefully, it will be for the property purchase for the recreational park. Just a real quick update on that, council. It does appear that everything finally came through here in the last 24 hours, and I would anticipate that we will be rolling forward with a presentation next week, or next council meeting, and then hopefully with approval at the following. So in the month of August, we should seal the deal and get the property purchased. The next item would be, I'm recommending we put $100,000 in capital outlay for the Rainham Conference Center. I can tell you behind the, behind the scenes, for years and years and years, we've worked on and been working towards trying to get a marquee, some big signage that we can put out there on 19 to let people know we have a conference center and what's going on. That's what that $100,000 is for. And of course, I'll give you a total update on that as soon as we bring all of the pieces together for it. But that would actually be a big marquee sign right off of Route 19, and we still got to get all the state approval and the whole nine yards, but hopefully we can get that all pulled together. I can tell you all those pieces are being worked on to bring before you for approval. The last item would be the Brown Oaks contractual, $38,500 was in there. We're adding $5,500, and that's merely stuff that was left in their budget that we need to carry forward for maintenance that is not, that did not get finished in the 2122 budget. So what that means is, that brings our total carry forward, as I stated earlier, we're increasing $1,389,500, decreasing to $2,477 in the, in the confiscated property of the Police Department. I'll ask, entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Got a first and a second. Any questions, council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries.
By the way, those three trucks you got ordered, are they be the same bryts?
Yeah, 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 they're all, they're all ordered and, yeah. Yeah, that was all, you know, bid and, you know, yeah. It's just, we probably have somebody here that can speak to them much better. It's just, it's part of, you know, the, just the supply and demand. I mean, it's just, you know, they just don't have, yeah, don't have vehicles, yeah. Okay, so as soon as they, but they, these vehicles are ordered for us specifically, so when they are manufactured and come in, we will be getting them. Okay, so the next item on the agenda would be budget revision number one for coal severance. And you can see in the original budget, we anticipated 2027 in the unassigned balance. It acts, that number actually ended up being $24,172. We put all those monies in public safety, so you can see that the revised budget with the tax, anticipated tax of this year is $34,199, and 100% of that goes into public safety. Also down there on the bottom, you can kind of see, council, the quarterly payments that we received on coal severance, you know, actually is, you'll be able to tell, there's a little bit of activity where that had gone down to pretty much nothing. There is a little activity to where last year, we received $13,406.44 in coal severance tax. It's ticking back up, especially that last quarter payment was $4,500, which was way above what we had projected. So there's a little coal activity happening in the area that's causing those numbers to go back up again. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Got a first and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries.
Counsel, tonight, when you came in at your, at your, at everybody's place, they should have found an updated contract for the Police Department recruiting bonus. I can tell you that there's been a lot of dialogue from the last meeting to this meeting. The chief is present at our meeting tonight, and it is still a item, an agenda item, of which I'm going to ask for approval. So at this time, what I'd like to do is go ahead and entertain a motion and then go into discussion.
Okay, we got a first and a second. What I'd like to do, council, is tell you that I've had a lot of conversation about this, even to the fact that I had a meeting with the entire department. And I will honestly, as I always would, be very transparent. I would say probably the majority of our Police Department do not support a recruiting bonus. But after, you know, meeting with them and having a lot of dialogue with the chief and many others, I still stand in the position as the city's mayor that this is a tool that we have in the toolbox to recruit certified guys versus uncertified guys. And it's actually an agenda item because our chief has asked me to move forward with the recruiting bonus. So as you can see, council, I had the contract reworked. It does a couple of things for us. Number one, it incentivizes certified guys to come to work at the City of Somersville. It's a four-year contract, pays them $4,000 the first year, $2,000 every year thereafter. So, you know, when they start, they get $4,000, and then the next three anniversaries they have, they'll get $2,000, which is a total of $10,000. But it also gets a commitment out of them for four years. So chief, anything you want to say?
No, other than we've utilized this in the past. We've hired two police officers using a bonus like this, and those two police officers are still employed with the city. So it works.
It was what, $5,000?
It was $5,000, yes.
Yeah, $5,000 for two years. Okay, any other questions, comments, discussion?
Do you anticipate, well, my problem with this is, when you hire somebody to be working for the other men that you've got, and then they're going to be making the same amount of money or more in the next four, eight, four, five years?
The next four years. And that's the fault, I go with that.
And I just, in my, in my experience from hiring people, I just don't think that's, I, that's just my belief. I just can't hardly believe that you ought to do that myself. It's, well, you, if you hire somebody to pay them now, they come from over from Nicholas County Sheriff's Department. They stay here. All they're going to do, they're going to have to hire some people to replace them. You're just turning the, they just turn over somewhere. I mean.
And what it is, it's a benefit to the city because once we get everyone trained and sent to the academy and back, a round number would be costing the city $15,000 before they're allowed to be a police officer. So we're investing $10,000 for a $15,000 payoff. So that, that's what it's all about. We would rather hire a certified police officer compared to an uncertified police officer.
And Gene, I totally understand and respect what you're saying.
And I do too, 100%.
I would say to you that recruiting bonuses are in everybody's toolbox. We accepted the resignation of a utility worker last week who's leaving to go get $4 an hour more plus a sign-on bonus. And, and so this does a couple of things for us. You know, it's, it is a $10,000 bonus, but we get a commitment of four years, so they have to pay back 100% of the bonus. And, and, and in the long run, if we were to go the uncertified route, that $15,000 price tag is very conservative because we would have them on payroll, chances are, like we have many times before, for a solid year before we could even get them into a, a class down at the academy. And when they are in that uncertified slot, basically what they can do is ride with another officer from a standpoint of being able to deploy them as an active officer they cannot be until they're certified. So yes, from the standpoint of recruitment, it helps us because we can get certified guys to come. And the other thing, I also understand what you're saying when you talk about, you know, other departments and, you know, you mentioned the county. And I feel for every Police Department in this, in this country and what we're all dealing with now. But the Police Department that we have to be concerned about and make sure that we keep, you know, you know, the staffing that we need is the Somersville Police Department. And so again, I think we have to, you know, we have to make our decisions based on what's in the best interest of Somersville Police Department. And that's why this is, this is on the agenda. So totally respect what you're saying, but you know, it's just, it's one of those things that I think in the long run, the benefits far outweigh, you know, what we, what we're faced with if we don't get certified guys. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. I would ask for a vote. So all those four signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, two names. Brandon and Gene. Okay, so with that said, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is recorder's report.
Okay, mayor, what I have tonight is just to let everybody know that we are testing tomorrow for the Police, the Police Department. We have slated eight applicants. Not sure until tomorrow who and how many will show up, but we do and are prepared for eight applicants. The testing is already here in my possession. I have it locked in my cabinet. I will have representation. Lawrence Tolly will be with me during the test tomorrow, so we plan on moving forward with that. It's a three-hour exam, and it begins at 9:00 a.m. It'll be taken here at the, here at the city building.
And just for the record, so everybody knows, Lawrence is one of three Police Commissioners. The other two are?
Mike Hughes and Brad Aderson.
Okay. So tomorrow will be the test. Good deal. Anything else, Gary?
No, that's okay.
Okay, council, moving right along. Mayor's report. Just want to let you know that the Nicholas County 2022 97th Annual Fair was this past week and weekend. Great job to the Fair Board and all those who played a role in its success. But I'm going to ask and put a little plea out on behalf of the Fair Board, to grow and make the 98th Annual bigger and better, the Fair Board needs your help. And they do. The Fair Board is in need of not only board members, but volunteers. So I just throw that out there. I certainly, my hat's off to the Fair Board and those that participated this year. But I encourage any citizen out there that would be interested in any way getting involved, whether it's a board member or being on one of their mini committees to help them with the fair, to please reach out to Jennifer Kaufman, who is the Chairwoman of the Board of Directors. They certainly could use your help and are looking for volunteers. The other thing, I got, I got a plea here to our entire city, council to you. I'm looking for agency, organization, or individuals. We, like most cities, rural and urban, rural, metropolitan, we're all dealing with something that's, you know, quite frankly, you know, getting the numbers that we've just never seen before, even right here in the City of Somersville, and that's homeless population. And, and so what I am looking at or looking for as a administrator is help. You know, before, we were fortunate because of the low population that we had homeless, we could get them to shelters in the region. And now we're finding shelters in the region are no longer taking the homeless because they're full. And not only they're full, they have the same issues that we do. So we do have a homeless population in Somersville, and so I'm putting a plea out to an organization, an agency, or individuals that have ideas that we could explore as a city, you know, we need to. You know, us. You know, before, we were fortunate because of the low population that we had homeless, we could get them to shelters in the region. And now we're finding shelters in the region are no longer taking the homeless because they're full. And not only they're full, they have the same issues that we do. So we do have a homeless population in Somersville. And so I'm putting a plea out to an organization, an agency, or individuals that have ideas that we could explore as a city, you know, we need to. You know, us like anywhere else in this great nation, you know, these are, for the most part, you know, our people. And we need to do what we can to help them get back on their feet and maybe regain quality of life. So anyway, I'm just putting it out there. I'm looking for suggestions and certainly if there's somebody out there that might have the answers, an agency or an organization, please contact me through City Hall here.
Mayor, do you have any idea about what the extent of that is?
So just roughly, I think ours tips somewhere between eight and 10 that we have homeless. And, you know, it's unfortunate and even, you know, our police have noticed and, you know, been dealing with issues, you know, that, you know, you're going to have when you have a homeless population and you don't have means for them to be taken care of. And so, you know, again, just, yeah, you know, I mean, you know, I've kind of recently myself crossed paths with some of them. And I know a couple of places where they're housed or where they house themselves here in our area. And so, you know, I'm just trying to figure out what we can do to help them and where is that? Where do they stay? Well, I would rather, I'll tell you, but I mean, they're staying in the woods and close to people's properties and I don't know.
Why can't we ask them where they're from, where their families are, where they'd like to be, and buy them a bus ticket there? We have the money to do that. And I've heard of other cities doing that. Well, we stop us from doing that. At least they have a place to start over.
Yeah.
They're not going to get a start here. They'll haul them out with a car.
Yeah, so I actually, I actually have thought about that and considered that, but what we're doing is just moving our population somewhere else and.
The other cities can solve the problem.
Well, I know.
You think we can't?
Yeah. Okay, so how about we talk afterwards, Mike? And I mean, so, so we can do that. I can tell you, some of them are from Webster County. They're going to go to Webster County and drop them off, and they're going to come right back. We've even had that experience where we've taken them to places and they come back. So certainly we can, we can, you know, explore that or continue to explore how we might have better results. Okay, any Council reports? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So move to second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries.